Ladies and gentlemen, I see the distinguished senator Weboy here in the room. And of course, the right honourable Deputy Speaker Police Banff, you are standing by. Right honourable Deputy Speaker, right honourable Benjamin Okesey Kalo, PHD, CON is in the room. And we can hear him 10 minutes from now, this event is beginning. The distinguished Weboy, the celebrities are there.
Thank you so very much, the Nigerian Police Band for... Salam alaikum, no bim, Mr. Fer. Oh, Allah Almighty, to direct this Anubu cause. This cause of nationalism and patriotism. May Allah... ...he cannot stand. He did not say, "Oh, to the mistake him." Sir, oh, to the Lord, he did not harm him. Oh, my God, he be allah him, walladhu allah. To judge, Akome, CON. Your Excellency, the President of the Senate, and Chairman, National Assembly, Distinguished Senator Dr. Goswell, who both are BBO, GCON, happily represented by the Senate, Deputy Chief Webb, Distinguished Senator Oneka Weboy. Your Excellency, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Right Honourable Tajudee Nabbas, PhD, GCON, Yan Zao Zao. I heard he will be stepping in any moment from now. Your Excellency, the former Presiding Officers of the House of Representatives here present, the Principal Officers of House of Representatives here present, the Members of the House of Representatives Committee on Constitution Review here present, the Members of National Assembly, both serving and pass, the Speakers and Members of State Houses of Assembly here present, the Royal Highnesses, our Fathers, the Leaders of our Traditional Councils and all our Traditional Rulers here present. Your Excellency, the British High Commissioner to Nigeria, Mr. Richard McGonmary, happily represented by the Deputy High Commissioner, Madame Gio, the Ambassador European Union Delegation to Nigeria, and the Echoers, Mr. Gotier Magnot, the Members of Diplomatic Corps, the Executive Director, Policy and Legal Advocacy Centre, Mr. Clement Wankor, the Development Partners, Members of Civil Society Organizations, the Representatives of various Political Parties here present, the Representatives of Hairs of Security Agencies here present, the Organized Level Union here present, the President and Members of National Council of Women Society, the President and Members of Nigerian Bar Association, the Women Groups here present. Thank you. The Organized Youth Groups here present, the Inclusive Friends Association for the People with Disabilities here present, invited girls, gentlemen of the press, ladies and gentlemen. Let me start by first apologizing for starting later than expected. The reason being that we did not expect the amount of crowds that we have witnessed here this morning. I was here on time, but I refused to mount the rostrum because we needed to show leadership. Our women, we are outside without seats, and we insisted the hall needed to be expanded for the women to have space in this room. To me, that is a reflection of an inclusive event. If the women are outside and the men are inside seated, the program will not be balanced. And I'm happy we've been able to open here. So for women who are outside, please, unless it is out of choice, we have a space for you inside here, the same way we have a space for you in representation. Thank you very much. You are not the only one smiling. I've seen my Fathers, the Kings, they are nodding and smiling. Long live the Kings. It is with a sense of national duty and great optimism for the future of our nation that I welcome you to this National Public Hearing. We are here to engage in a foundational act of nation building, the collective reimagining and reshaping of the Supreme Law of our land, the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria.
The summary is, we have gone around the country. This is the grand finale of submissions. And then, you can see women have taken over the arena to make sure that special seats is reserved for them. Not only that amendment, issue of state creation, local government, issue of elections, that is to have all the elections in one day. Instead of having National Assembly and Presidential Election one day, they come after two weeks. Many people don't go back. That's why you see the numbers in this governance is smaller to what you have in the Presidential and the National Assembly election. So these are the reasons. And I believe today is a great day for Nigeria.
Do you think that some of these requirements, especially where special seats for women and election in one year, would be supported by your colleagues at the State House of Assembly?
Well, I cannot... But me, I will support it. And I believe majority at... For National Assembly, we may not have problem. But for the state, especially is because of culture, except there is more education using the ulamas, the imams, the pastors to talk to the people so that it can go down to the grassroots. Because I of the north, I'm of the north, I'm in northern. I live my life in Kanu City. And I know that this thing need to be preached very well for them to understand. Because not every man can allow his wife just to go out and do politics. So maybe they will explain the benefit in it to them. Because if you look at the National Assembly now, it's only Borno State and Yobe that usually produce female. In most of the northern states, we don't see female legislators. So, and the way Borno is is because Western education came through that side. And that is why you can see some of their women in the National Assembly. But in other states like Kanu, like Kastina, like... But many other states, they don't have women in the National Assembly. So they need to use the ulamas and the imams and the pastors in the north to preach. So also in this area too, some culture too don't believe that there are women who go out. So they need more work to be done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I think that today's event is the culmination of several engagements with all stakeholders. We've had sectorial engagements with the judiciary, the security operatives, even people from the civil society, women organizations, professional groups, all kinds of people that make up the Nigerian nation. And you remember that we also went to regional and zonal public hearings, where we went to two states per geopolitical zone. So having concluded that we thought that we should have a National Public Hearing, which is in essence a wrap-up of all that we have gathered through these processes. So that anything that is left out, people can, you know, talk about it and as well submit memorandums. So this essentially is the last opportunity for people to talk about the ongoing Constitution Review process. Yes, certainly, because we run a federal system and the sub-nationals are also very strong because of their numbers and the requirements of two-thirds were stipulated by the Constitution. So from the word go, the 10th House of Representatives or the National Assembly Committee on Constitution Review decided to carry the speakers of state assemblies along. So we've always had them as represented by the Speaker of Speakers Conference in almost all of our engagements. Even today, I saw about four speakers who are here. So they've been part of the process, more or less. And one would expect that at each turn, they got back to their state assemblies and that they had briefed their members on the going sun, on the issues that are on the agenda. So I should hope that they are already prepared, you know, waiting for the clean copy as will be passed by the National Assembly to actually vote on and fact-track the system. Even in the National Assembly, I have my fears. I am in support of the bill, but I think that a lot of advocacy have been made on the outside rather than on the inside. I still hear members who are not particularly sold on the need why there should be reserved seats for women. So as one of the people who support the bill, I would also encourage promoters of that bill that they need to do a lot more work in the intervening weeks leading up to voting on this bill. Because on the outside is popular. But I can tell you that in the National Assembly, particularly the House of Representatives where I sit in and interact with my members, some people are still not quite sure why we should grant special seats to women. My pleasure.
Yes, today is the National Public Hearing. The climax of a public hearing before we resolve to the complete technical session. As you are all aware, the committee has gone around the six geopolitical zones. We've had engagement and interactions with stakeholders, with the states, with our people at the grassroots. And today, we made it a point, you know, to recap what we have done so far as a committee. So we are happy for the turnout and the House is impressed with the participation of Nigerians so far. Yes, the bills, as a matter of fact, are proposals. And the proposals brought by Nigerians, they represent their feelings. They represent their aspirations and beliefs and what they think the future holds for this country. So as a parliament, we are open to every suggestion. We are open to every opinion. And at the end of the day, it is about the people of Nigeria. So after today at the technical session, we are going to look at the pros and cons and the support that these bills have gathered so far. Because the essence of governance is to ensure the happiest... To ensure happiness for the largest population of our people. So if these proposals, if are granted legislative ascent would lead to a happier nation, then you know that is exactly what the parliament is going to do. But as a matter of fact, there are proposals that many Nigerians have welcomed, as well as many Nigerians have also spoken against a few of them. That is the essence of democracy. You know, for the people to always be heard and for the people to recede along with the decision-making of this country. Well, the women have engaged very good approach this time, which is to dialogue and engage and to lobby. So I believe it is a work in progress. We cannot conclude because today's public hearing is not to pass a verdict on what is popular amongst colleagues or not. It is about listening to the people. So the final decision of parliament will be when these bills are tabled before the Committee of the Whole. It is that day that we shall tell whether the bills are popular or not. But I believe that every bill that has been listed by this committee has once given value or the order for the progress and development of our great nation. Well, I can bet you that this is totally different from everything that has been in the past. And my reason for that is the timelines which we have set, the way we have walked, the consultation that we have carried out. Remember that this committee for the first time engaged even those who would help to interpret the laws when they eventually passed. When we had our meeting with justices of the Supreme Court, justices of the Court of Appeal and judges and even magistrates sometime in Lagos, we have engaged the media as far as this is concerned. So from all indication, you will agree with me that yes, this is a total different package from what was obtainable in past assemblies. We are getting it right. The Committee Chairman, Right Honourable Benjamin Kalo, is equal to the tax. You have seen the speed, you have seen the participation of members. And you have seen what we have been able to achieve within just a period of two years. So I think we are better prepared to achieve results this time around. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Nirri Goit. I work with Action Aid as the Women's Rights Program Specialist. Yeah, so the special seats bill for women is a very important bill right now because of the need for an inclusive governance. Nigeria is made up of... Fifty percent of its population are women. So if laws and policies that are made, you know, don't promote and protect women, if there's no inclusion in policymaking, the laws will not suit women and children and girls, you know. So it is very important that women are included in decision-making. Women have a perspective to development that complements men. Men and women working together will help us to achieve sustainable development. Women can contribute to the security issues on ground. Women can contribute to health, to education, to social welfare. Women can contribute to power, to even the oil sector. So women's voices are very critical for moving Nigeria forward. So this bill is not only for women. It is for a progressive Nigeria where development can be taken to the next level. There are lots of potentials in women that has not been maximized. So we are seeing that the passage of this special seats bill will, in the long run, increase Nigeria's GDP because women are very productive. Women's participation in policymaking is very important. And we are at that stage now where Nigerian women are saying that they should be included and the special seats bill should be created. Because in politics, there's no fair playing ground for women. You know, you have the issue of money politics, Godfatherism. You have issue of socio-cultural norms. You have issue of, you know, we are in a patriarchal society. So that is why this quota need to be created for women. And it's fair because quotas are created for, you know, every sector of society. We have the federal character, you know, where it ensures that all ethnic groups and states are included in Nigerians' politics and, you know, and employment. We also have the quota system when it comes to political parties, you know, where they are zoning, you know, from election to election. So also, we are asking for a gender quota. We need the democracy of Nigeria to reflect its true nature of its citizens, which is a combination of men and women. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Andrew Amedu. I'm the Country Director for Action Aid Nigeria. So when you have a situation where a group of persons are disadvantaged, the first thing to do, equity demands that you first of all support those that are disadvantaged to come to a bit of level playing ground before you then allow equality to take its course. That's what we are saying here. If you look at issues of equity, women are way below, way below the ladder in Nigeria. So equity demands that the first thing to do is to support women to come up up to the podium where men are. Then we can then allow equality to take its course and play out. First of all, we have a patriarchal society. So men decide where the meeting is happening, when the meeting is happening. Men decide, should those that are married, should their spouses go for such meetings or not? Men have, men make most of those calls. So the meetings should be fair enough, that's one. The second thing is the fund. If you look at the current, where the budget, where the fund actually lies, you have majority of the men that are, that are, that are, that are have most of this money, they have the resources to buy a presidential ticket for 100 million naira. So it's most men that will be able to afford this. Women will not be able to afford this. So to deal with those, you have to look at the issues of campaign financing. Are we, are we sticking to the laws, what the law says about campaign financing? We have to look at the political party. Are we, is my political party just equitable enough to support or help women have a good playing field in the political space? Are we looking at our society? Are we, are we encouraging women? Are we supporting women to be able to do that? So those, those two key things, or three, are primary, are key in dealing with issues of women's, promoting women's participation in politics. My name is Dr. Andrew Amedu. I'm the Country Director for Action Aid Nigeria.
Good afternoon. Okay, my name is Shizobobo Chin. I work with Blueprints, and I'm the Vice President for Nawaage, North Central Zone. It's important because it's going to balance the democratic situation in the country. You know that it's actually in balance in a situation where you have more than half of the population. Women make up more than 50%, we are told, even though we've not had census for a long time. But the projection we have is that women are about 50% or more. And then you have a situation where in the legislature, you have only, like in the Senate, you have, we save three because one has been off for over six months and they refuse to call her back. So even if we go by four to 100 and something, there's no basis for balancing that. So this bill, expectation is that it's going to balance the equation to some extent and then give women opportunity. We've seen countries where it's been done, like Rwanda, South Africa, and they are better off for it. So why not Nigeria? It's going to give women opportunity to bring their, their own contribution to the table. And we know that a lot of women who have had the opportunity to represent us have done well. We know that people like Okonjo Iwala, late... Former Navdak boss, Dada Kune, sorry, and other women. Even right now, we still have, Ogunjobo Okonjo, they're still representing us. We have women who have done well, who have shown that, yes, if given the opportunity, they can do well. So expectation is that this bill will give women the opportunity to also contribute and encourage those that are coming up. Because we know some of the problems that we've had that led to this. It may be our cultural and traditional background. But now that the traditional rulers are supporting the women, the religious rulers are supporting the women, expectation is that this time around, we will get it. And Nigeria will be the better for it. My name is Shizobobo Chin.
Yes, first, my name is Honorable Chief Mitema Obodo. I speak for and represent Obia Federal Constituency. I must on, by way of preamble, say that citizens' participation is key and is one of the major yardsticks for measuring good governance. The House of, the 10th House of Representatives is presently organizing a public hearing as it's going about doing some amendments on the 1999 Constitution. Thematic areas have been outlined. Majorly, it has to be with electoral reforms. There has to be with special reserve seats for women and even for the disabled, as it were, and several other thematic areas. Now, why we have to be happy with the process is that the citizens themselves are participating. They are making the Constitution for themselves. And so it is no longer a constitution that will be turned out from the legislature or from dictates of the executive arm, but that the people themselves are speaking to the constitution that will govern them, that will guide them. So that is the import and the importance of today's program. Thank you. I can assure you that the 10th House of Representatives have adopted a model. The model is to lobby the state legislators themselves. Because you know, in Nigeria, we have a process. The Constitution cannot be amended and concluded at the National Assembly. It has to go down to the respective state assemblies. And two-thirds of the state assembly are required to endorse whatever that is done here for it to be legitimate. So we have adopted a model. And the model is all members of the committee and indeed all members of National Assembly, who are in tune with what we are doing, are made to begin now to speak to their state legislators. The executive at the federal level will speak to the governors and all that. And I believe we'll do something differently. We'll have it right. Do you really think I can speak on this? We cannot preempt those things. Why do they think so? Why do they think that the states, those states will not support the reserve seats? You see, what we are doing now is not as if we are coming to alter the existing seats, both at the national or at the state level. We are creating special reserve seats. So if a state is having 24 seats, those ones are already there. It's just to say, look, let one woman also come in and join. And that one is purely for them. All the contestants will be women. It does nothing to do with the existing seats. So why will anybody say they are opposing? I don't even want to believe that. Even if you tell me that some people are saying this or saying that, I don't want to believe that they will oppose. Thank you very much, yeah.
I'm Faith Wajiri. I work with Women in Politics Forum and I also coordinate for Young Women in Politics Forum. We are here, Nigerian... We are here, Nigerian women and Nigerians are here today to ask the National Assembly to pass the special seats reserve for women bill, to show the National Assembly and to also show the President of the country that this bill is a serious bill and that we mean business. We've been around across all these zones for both the senate and House of Reps and public hearing and we are here right now at the national public hearing and we are asking our legislators that we voted into power to listen to us as their constituents and pass the special seats reserve for women bill.
Now, finally, if this bill is passed, how always do you think this will impact the governance and policymaking of Nigeria?
I think that's a strategic question you've asked because when people look at this, they always look at it from a lens of gender. They don't see the lens of national development, of social caution and of how we can have economic growth. So we all know that at the heart of everything we do is policymaking and policies and decisions are made at the state houses of assembly, at the national assemblies and also by the president. And now, where you don't have women enough, we are not able to represent and our voices are not able to get into the policies that are going to be passed. I think, for instance, when we were all in this country shortly before the last general election, when the law, when we had a policy that had to do with NARA and a lot of people thought that it wasn't going to have a lot of effect, but we had grassroots women who were doing businesses, day-to-day business and couldn't have money to go about their day. So you see how policies affect genders and also affect national development. So we are looking at a situation where we would have, because as currently, the numbers we have are poor. In the national and state assemblies combined, we don't have up to five percent female representation, which is quite poor in a country that has almost fifty percent of women as representation. And also having these women also as voters and these women also doing well in the private sector and actually also in the international field. So we are asking that for, an assembly that has one hundred and nine senators and has only four female senators is actually poor. And an assembly that has three hundred and sixty House of Representatives members and has barely fourteen female House of Representatives is poor. And state houses of assembly across the thirty-six states that have a total combined number of nine hundred and ninety-three members at the state house of assembly but have only fifty-four elected women is also poor. So these are numbers unreal. And can I say that in the state assemblies, we have fifteen states that don't have any woman at all in the state assemblies? So to break it down for you, what directly that means is that even in the state houses of assembly, in all those thirteen states where we have committees on women affairs, we have men that chair those committees. Now, how much, I think our viewers, both male and female, can agree with me that even I, as a woman, am I not be able to understand issues that pertain to men? The same way the men cannot understand issues that pertain to me because our peculiarities are different. We know the story of the Hindu Five Blind Men and the elephant and how one touched and said the elephant is a wall, another touched and said the elephant is a leg, another touched and said the elephant is a long tail. If you look at this separately, you might find that they are wrong, but collectively together, they described an elephant, which is what we are trying to do with this bill. We are trying to bring women's views to policymaking so you're able to show that we have wholesome policies that are made for us to grow as a country.
Good afternoon. My name is Honorable Irene Awunike. The President, League of Women Voters of Nigeria, Nilo. It is important, it is obviously important because we have very few women in national assembly. And the reason we have few women in national assemblies is because few women were voted in twenty-twenty-three. And why were few women voted in twenty-twenty-three? Because the political parties gave nominations mostly to men. And so it is just a mechanism to get more women to the ballot so that Nigeria can have proper democracy. It is a bill that will restore our democratic integrity. It is also a legacy bill for this administration. It will change a lot of things within the economic space, the political space. It will sanitize the political space. Because when women are on the table, we have a lot of conversations that concern welfare of the people and then inclusion in general. So this bill is a bill of necessity for Nigeria, for our reputation and for our economy. It is a bill that will not just restore our democratic integrity, but it will also put us on the map of countries that are inclusive democratically. Any democracy that excludes more than fifty percent of its population is not democracy. So we just need to, we are advocating and asking that the tenth national assembly put their name in gold because they will be forgotten. Because nobody remembers those who were in ninth assembly that didn't come back. But for the tenth assembly, if they vote for this bill, they will never be forgotten in the history of Nigeria. Nigeria will remember them for turning us around and putting us on the map of nations that believe in inclusion and believe that women have a voice.
Okay, my name is Angelina Albon, the founder of Inclusive Skills Development Initiative, I S C I for women. Yeah, the challenges women feel, face during the election is discrimination. And that challenges have been a problem. If we check currently in the House of Representatives, women are few. The numbers of women are few in the House of Assembly. But with this special bill of seats for women representative in governance, it will bring women close and also inclusion for women and also women with disability in the parliament. And in that aspect, when this bill is passed, we will see that it brings a development in both economies and also representative of women in the parliament. Thank you.
My name is Chikas Kumli. I'm a politician and a gender advocate. Actually, this bill is a very good bill, not for women, but for Nigeria. Because first of all, it will help us to sustain our democracy, strengthen our democracy, make it more viable. And why this bill is important is it will bring and trickle down good governance delivery to the grassroots. Because this is not going to be about just representation of women in government or in parliament, but it will be about the delivery of good governance to the people. And it will also be a bill that will speak to the yearnings and aspirations of Nigerians. Because there is no democracy that is viable when that democracy is exclusive. So for it to be inclusive, for it to be strengthened and for us to sustain this very democracy, we need to open up the space, just as women in Nigeria are clamoring for the result seats bill. And we are hopeful that the tenth national assembly, with the endorsement of the president, will make this a lived reality for Nigerian women.
We are here, that has, the South House, at the hall of the South House, they are here to represent women. We are here to support the bill. The special, we are here, we are here to support the bill.
The Deputy Speaker ensures that the hall can be expanded to accommodate more people. They will join the F J F on the high table and this event, they will appreciate you. All our traditional rulers, from the Super P to the, you are all so very welcome. As I have, as I told, Honorable Justice C, you are also very welcome. The military representatives, former governors, Emeka Obotan, Bingo, you are also very welcome. For the NATO, UN Women, UNDP Ambassador, Otue Nyon of the European Union. In box of generals, Office of the National Security Advisor, Office of the Chief of Defense Staff, people of those who are still standing, chairs have been, more chairs have been brought in to ensure that our honourable members are seated. Honorable Gimba, we celebrate you, thank you. Senior for Florence, Ita, Kiwa, eh? Let's put our hands together for you, different struggles. And whenever the emancipation of people, whenever the betterment of people is in the conversation, you can be sure that Mama Bakasi, your frontline campaigner for women rights, we see you, we welcome you, thank you. Ambassador, free to push for whatever you are looking for, thank you. Dr. Meguna Salim, Lady South African Representative of UNDP. Again, like I said, you are seeking. Barista, this is Linda Afewa, is representing the Y B Q. Barista of the Chuku, Osorah, is the Deputy National Legal Advisor of the People's. What are you asking for? I can hear you, women in the hall, what are you asking for? When do you want to? Honorable, thanks to the Nigerian Omuche, yesterday, and all the rest of you that are doing great work. We see you, we thank you. Right, Honorable Tobi of the Chuku, is at his development formation, thank you so very much. Our consultants that have done amazing work to make sure that this works. Aladi Amalai, a renowned constitutional expert. Mamad Osouman, senior advocate from Zanoujamo, Ita, Enam, all our consultants, we thank you. Matthew Aiva Koro, the barista of the Fifth, you are very welcome, we'd like to have you. Foreign and commonwealth development officer, when I release them. All principal officers automatically should come to the high table. Principal officers of the National Security, if you think, please come to the high table. We like what you're all doing and you're all very welcome. Honorable Zainab Gimba, Amazon, we celebrate you. Majesty, we thank you. Please, you guys, any tradition I want to hear, but as one may recognize, please send us your name on the show to properly acknowledge you. And love you all, for you, is Imperial Majesty, Oba, the King, and the Father, God, Day, the First, Alleluia, and King, Yesa. Awuna, the Women Voters of Nigeria. I understand you are leading over five hundred women here today. Irene Awuna, your women.